Meeting, roll call please.
Long.
Here.
Present.
Are there any, any conflict of interest statements?
No.
Number four, approval of the minutes of the meeting of July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I recommend the approval of the minutes for the July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I concur. Uh, number five, matters from other department heads or their representatives, anybody? Okay, moving on to number six, correspondence, uh, letter A, correspondence received from Brian Miller, Purdue University Northwest advising there will be noise from the party music events being held on August second, two thousand and twenty-three from five P M. to nine P M. in the gazebo behind Griffith Hall, Rippen Hall, twenty-four forty-one seventy-third Street, and on August third, two thousand and twenty-three from eight A M. to five P M. in the parking lot of the Niels Nelson Biotech Science Building. P N W. Police Department will be present to ensure safety and security. Um, he's done this before.
Yeah, it's, uh, Purdue Northwest request, obviously, they've done this before, and I would just say, um, I would request that P D., uh, meet with Chief Miller to determine whether or not they believe that the security, uh, that they are proposing is appropriate.
Okay.
Um, but as far as the noise goes, I think the board could, can weigh that request and do what it like, would like, would like to do, so.
So we'll prove that, yeah.
So, recommendation to approve Brian Miller's request and refer this to the police department for follow-up.
And I will concur. Uh, letter B, correspondence received from Brian Miller, Purdue University Northwest advising there will be noise from the concert event being held on September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three from seven P M. to ten P M. in the top floor of the parking garage, Hammond Campus. The P N W. Police Department will be present to ensure safety and security.
On this one, Mr. President, and I would just, uh, request that, uh, either Border Works or P D. Follow up with Chief Miller, uh, to make sure that he is notifying the residents, I think we've done that in the past, so that the residents know, hey, there's a concert coming, and it ends at ten o'clock, everyone will be cleared out by ten thirty, you know, whatever it is, just so the neighborhood knows.
He, he called me yesterday to ensure me that they're handing out flyers and stuff, so yes.
Yeah, they usually do, I.
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Recommendation to approve Mr. Miller's request.
And I will concur. Uh, moving on to letter C, correspondence received from Chris Campbell, Director of Information Technology, requesting the approval of a non-appropriation rider agreement with C I T. Bank.
I have not seen this, do you have that document with you?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is just, uh, they, they asked you with the citywide copier agreement, and that's just a, uh, I think it's a new bank agreement, it comes annually.
Okay.
So I'd request its approval as presented.
Okay.
Recommend, I recommend the approval of Mr. Campbell's request as submitted.
And I will concur. Uh, moving on to letter D, correspondence received from Nancy Repay, Saint John Bosco School, requesting permission to place safety cones on one seventy-first Place Monday through Friday between the hours of seven A M. to eight A M. and two thirty P M. to three fifteen P M. Starting on August fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to the first week of June, two thousand and twenty-four.
I rec, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I recommend the approval of Ms. Repay's request as submitted.
And I concur. Uh, letter E, correspondence received from Doug Van Ramshor's Regional Health Clinic requesting to block State Street from the West Side intersection of State Street and Soul Avenue to the first curb of the library's West State Street entrance on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three from nine A M. to three P M. Yeah. We've done, um, yeah, I know we've done that before, so.
I think he's called before, and I think that last year we asked for a visual, remember? Cause it was kind of confusing as to where they wanted it.
Yeah, he.
This year he provided the.
Yeah.
Document.
Yeah. You, you want, you need to see it, Dean?
Oh, um, thank you, Mr. President, good morning.
Morning.
So I wanted to just, uh, uh, brief the, um, the board that, uh, that week, uh, we, we, it, it, it's not blocking Soul Avenue, right? I mean, that's good, so the board may know that Norfolk Southern is on its way through to replace the northern set of tracks, uh, they're gonna be at Calumet, uh, that's a state-approved, uh, closure starting Monday, the thirty-first, so my next mon, uh, yeah, next Monday, for two days, then they're gonna move over to the Boulevard and close that Norfolk Southern Crossing for two days to replace the crossing, and then the following week, they're gonna start and burn them and work their way east. So we, we think by, uh, the ninth, which is this day, they will be east of Calumet by then, is our expectation. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect what we're, what we're doing downtown.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't look like they taught the stuff you're talking about, they don't block Soul, I mean, State Street, sorry.
They're blocking State, not Soul.
Right, correct, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I just, it's getting very complicated with all the train work that's going on, not with, just with the Westlake, but the, the Norfolk Southern rail replacement, um, and all the other projects that the city has going on, it's, it's getting complicated to get around, so Soul Avenue should be open, uh, when the train finishes their track replacement on, we hope the ninth, we expect the ninth.
Gotcha, okay.
I recommend the approval of Mr. Ramshort's request.
And I concur. Uh, moving on to letter E, correspondence received from, uh, we got that one, right? Moving on to letter, uh, sorry, correspondence received from William Short, Chief of Police, advising that Officer Denise Saney will resign from the Hammond Police Department effective July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I recommend the approval of Chief Short's request.
And I concur. Uh, letter G, correspondence received from William Short, Chief of Police, requesting the approval of the following officers to be promoted to the rank of Third Class Patrolman effective July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, Officer Eric Banvich, Officer Nicholas Moore, Officer Joseph Ivasik, Officer Ariel Alvarez Ortega, Officer Alexandra Montano, Officer Shane McCormick, Officer Anthony Juranovic, and Officer Tyler Krakenfels.
I recommend the approval of Chief Short's request.
And I concur. There's a lot to say, man. Okay, letter H, correspondence received from Third District Councilman Barry Tyler requesting that Hammond Central High School be allowed to, uh, host their annual back-to-school giveaway on August second, two thousand and twenty-three from ten A M. to two P M. They would like to use the Civic Center parking lot for additional parking if needed, and requesting to block the westbound lane on Eden, starting at the end of the Boys and Girls Club parking lot entrance.
Only thing I would say is regarding the Civic Center lot, I should go for the park board, so I would ask Adrian to forward that request and Tom Councilman Tyler to, um, Katie Blonk over at, uh, Parks, because they're being his next one, so. Yes, uh, that'd be, that would be, so, so I would just maybe send the, send the, yeah.
Aneisha, it was some email communications that went back and forth, and Aneisha gave the permission.
Okay, if you can match it, I can use the parks, so.
So you're, you're good other than that?
Other than that, yes, okay.
I recommend the approval of Councilman, um, Tyler's request for the stipulation that they used, uh, half of the lot closest to the football field was the stipulation.
I'll concur. Uh, letter I, correspondence received from Carmen Mulgary, uh, requesting to put a sign on the northeast corner of the bank building, fifty-two thirty-one Holman Avenue. This sign will replace the previous approved sign that was taken down months ago. Sign will go up on August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three and be, will, and will be renewed on December, two thousand and twenty-three.
Um, the board's aware that this was, uh, they had a sign on the front, on Holman side, they wanted to move it. I've seen the draft of it, it looks appropriate, I would just, um, ask that, um, Tom know that we made aware of it, and so he knows it's coming, and, and I think, yeah, he is, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I recommend the approval of Mrs. Margery's request.
And I concur. Uh, letter J, correspondence received from Controller's Office requesting the approval of the renewal of amusement devices, license for American Legion Post two thirty-two, Anchor Inn, Michigan Bar and Grill, Calumet Londer Matt, Mr. Joe's Incorporated, and William, and Welcome Inn.
I recommend the approval of the Controller's Office request.
Okay, and I concur. Uh, letter K, correspondence received requesting rental registration hearings.
I recommend that we set the rental registration hearings for August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I concur. Number seven, matters from board members, you have anything? Okay, moving on to number eight, new business, letter A, first extension of agreement to rehabilitate property located at nine forty, nine forty-one Reese Avenue, submitted for approval.
Uh, I can just speak to A, B, and C, these are all requests from Mr. Luder, as long as they're signed, uh, which they should be, I would request each of them be approved as presented.
Um, it doesn't look like the ones signed.
Which one?
These will be, need to be signed by the homeowner first, it says, and it hasn't been signed yet.
Correct, okay.
This is the sec, this is B.
B, okay, so B is go back on.
I make sure I have. Yeah, this is eight forty-three Logan.
B and C not signed, alright, so if B and C are not signed, then I'd only request the approval of A, and then, um, B and C get back to, uh, to me, Adrian, to get them signed.
Okay, well, so we're approving just A, correct?
If it's signed, yes.
Okay, it is.
I recommend the approval for the re, the agreement to rehabilitate the property at nine forty-one Reese as submitted.
And I concur. Uh, moving on to letter B, uh, extension, second extension of agreement to rehabilitate property located at eight forty-three Logan Street, submitted for approval.
I recommend that this be sent back to, uh, gather the homeowner's signature, recommend, I'm sorry.
It's okay, and I concur. Uh, letter C, agreement to rehabilitate property located at thirty Warren Street, submitted for approval.
Also recommend that this be sent back so the homeowner can have ability to sign.
And I concur. Letter D, order to rescind and release order to demolish property located at twelve forty-six Indiana Street, submitted for approval.
We've also received information from Mr. Luder, uh, that this could be removed, and so that's good news, we request its approval.
Thank you.
It can be recorded.
Thank you.
I recommend the approval of this request as submitted.
And I concur. Letter E, right-of-way permits, looks like there's five of them, received from Engineering, submitted for approval.
Good morning.
Mr. Gordis, good morning.
Uh, so there's five permits, a couple major ones would be Indianapolis Boulevard and Hundred sixty-fifth. That was approved, it's a NIPSCO request.
Mm-hmm.
It was approved back in April, I believe, but they're just getting around to do it, they're gonna go overhead with some lines, so there's gonna be lane restrictions on the Boulevard and also sixty-fifth going westbound, a north right turn lane, so they're gonna have that shut down for a while. And the other major two is August third, the Passion Nikti is gonna walk the train across to get ready for their bridge lift, and I believe it's August eighth, they're gonna close it for Holman Avenue for three weeks. Michigan, Holman in Michigan.
Okay.
Alright, and so they're gonna set the bridges, M O. T., advance warning signs will be set up after this is approved, hopefully today or tomorrow, so I would recommend approval.
Can we, do you know where it's gonna be closed at Michigan? Will they be able to go east on Michigan, or no?
No. Oh, yeah.
Be able to go from, from Holman east on Michigan, they'll be able to go?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
They told us that they were gonna keep that turn movement open.
Okay, good, okay, I was hoping.
Northbound or southbound?
It would be southbound Holman and eastbound Michigan will be open, right? But won't be able to go over there.
Okay.
Yes.
At least there's one, one that can, I, I was afraid it was gonna get closed both ways.
Right.
Not have use of Michigan, okay.
And that's one day.
Gotcha, okay.
Right.
Okay.
One day to walk the crane across.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
We're good, yeah.
I recommend the approval of the right-of-way permits as submitted.
And I concur. Moving on to letter F, C, Click Fix, requesting more stop signs or traffic signals at four twelve to four twenty-four Cleveland Street.
Um, I think this may have come up last week.
Uh, it did.
It's, um, it's gonna take me some time, um, I put out, uh, our, our camera system, or, or, or video surveillance of the intersection, it looked, there looks to be a problem, um, particularly because Hundred sixty-fifth was closed at, uh, at, at the train crossing near the overhead bridge.
Right.
The pedestrian bridge, so all the traffic was headed that way, so I felt like last week I didn't get a good representative sample of what it would normally be.
Right.
I also spoke with Councilman Tyler, and he said that he would talk to the resident at the southeast corner of Garfield and Cleveland to, um, ask them to, we're gonna have to put a, a, no parking here, the corner sign, because they're parking this S U. V. right, right, as the, as the westbound approaches that intersection, it's, it's, the, the northbound traffic is like, what am I supposed to do? I'm pulling out, and then all of a sudden a car comes by.
Right.
So I wanna put the cameras about, out again under normal cir- circumstances and get a better read for what's going on. My thought is we may end up asking the board for temporary stop signs at this location until the train sort of gets through its, you know, its growing pains, and then, you know, re-figure how we're, we're gonna do with that intersection, so can you kick it two weeks for me, please? The status in two weeks?
Yes. Yeah.
I recommend that we set the matter for C, Click Fix, for status of August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I concur. Letter G, garage sale permits submitted for approval. I wanna make sure that one on one sixty-fifth isn't going up again. Where's this one at? Do you remember, does anybody remember that address on one sixty-fifth where they've had several, the big one?
Uh, you mean garage sales?
Yeah.
And it's somewhere in the four hundred or four, yeah, it's on the, it's on the, it's definitely the south, or, I'm sorry, north side of the block, I think it's like near where the old butcher was.
Well, we have one for five twenty-nine, one sixty-fifth, I just wanna make sure that's not the.
That's sound.
It's on there.
Oh, right?
Yeah, it's on there.
See, cause I'm not, if that is the address, I'm not, I'm not gonna approve it.
Is it five twenty-nine?
Yes, can you, can you check that, Nick, and let us know? Okay, that, that one is for, um, what, what's the date today?
Yes, here we go, hold on, um. It's Hundred sixty-fifth Van Buren, and this is back in June of this year. I asked Linda, and she said there was no garage sale permit approved for an address like that. A few weeks ago, someone put two cross street names, but it was denied, they have to have an address. Five twenty-nine, one sixty-fifth was approved for this weekend, and that was June tenth.
Okay, so we're, I'm not approving, that, they want, that's for tomorrow and the next day, and I'm not approving that one until we, I need to have, have you ever had, have you ever spoke to them, Nick, or no?
Um, I believe Jordan had stopped by and explained that, you know, the parameters of the garage sale permit, and they're only allowed to have, uh, two per year, and, I mean, the manner in which they're conducting on their, of their right-of-way, so once that weekend was over, that was gonna be it.
Okay, so.
Did we, I'm sorry, Jeff.
That's okay.
Nick, last weekend.
Yeah.
We sent that video of that post.
Correct.
Was, was that near this area, or is it associated with this?
Yeah, I, I believe in the background, we were able to conclude that, um, the posting on Facebook did originate from this, uh, this lot.
Same thing?
In which, yes, in which the garage sale permits, or garage sales were being held. Um, so he has exceeded the, uh, the number and the size of the garage sales that would be permitted. It's a vacant lot in which he purchased, and last year became, um, relevant to us that he was utilizing this lot to hold these garage sales. He does live down the block, however, um, you know, he was staying within the parameters of, of what he was permitted to, to have, but it's grown, and he's been advertising as a business, and so at this time, it, it wouldn't, uh, meet, uh, the garage sale ordinance.
Okay, so.
There's a chance he would meet the pop-up vendor.
Correct.
He gets seven days a year, but he hasn't applied for that. I would request that this be denied and that P D. be alerted, so that they're out there.
Okay.
First thing in the morning, or whatever it is, and they're monitoring, so that he's, they shut him down, and he gets cited, he needs to be cited.
Yeah, the other thing, it's a residential lot, also, I mean, a pop-up vendor, I believe they still have to operate on a commercial, he's own.
Um.
Well, question, with a question, Kevin, if he did apply for that and was allowed seven, would the ones he had already be used again, counted against that, or no?
We would try, well, I don't know, if it was under a garage sale, probably not.
Okay, so.
But then he has, you know, seven more, or whatever, but.
Okay.
Yeah, if he was doing it illegally, maybe.
Okay. Well, he's got, he's, he wants it from eight A M. to six P M. tomorrow and the next day, Nick, if you guys wanna check on that too.
Yep, you got it.
Can we have Adrian Collins letting you know it was denied?
Yeah.
I recommend the approval of the garage permits with the exception of five twenty-nine, one sixty-fifth, that one will be denied, and we'll have inspections follow-up to make sure there's no, uh, garage sale going on there, as well as communicating with the homeowner.
And P D., please.
And P D.
And P D., and I concur. Number nine, old business, uh, letter A, status eight forty-seven, one seventeenth Street.
Um, this is the rough library, so I'll let Mr. Luder give us an update.
Yes, I met with the owner and his general contractor Tuesday afternoon, unfortunately sad to say that the building interior is in the same condition it was last time I was there a couple years ago. No major progress has been done on the inside, they do have a, uh, proposal with, uh, licensed insulating contractor to complete the insulation, and I'll let, uh, Mr. Sears and his general contractor, uh, kind of present their plan of attack for the, for the completion of the building.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, it's been a while since, uh, Brian and I had been, uh, working together, I've, uh, run a small business on the side, I've always been in the background, um, Brian and I have had a hard time with the finance aspects of this, uh, project, we're not giving up, um, the bids that we were getting for spray foam insulation were far too, too high, so I was able to, uh, get with a company called Mopper, we'd like to move forward. What stalled me lately in the last, I wanna say, maybe month and a half, I could be wrong on that, is we have a, a major roof issue, um, so I'm gonna have to find a, a corrugated roofing specialist to help me to pull that system apart, I've roofed before, but not with that system, to, uh, replace the lumber underneath, uh, and flash the chimney, which is very large, it's the old, uh, library, I'm gonna need a little bit of help, so I'm currently scouting for some help, uh, so we can, uh, appropriately hire for that and aid me in that. I did pull permit for that, um, and then we're gonna keep moving along with all the phases of construction, including, uh, not just insulation, I, I'm a licensed plumber, I will be taking over to finish the plumbing, we've had a rough inspection on that in the past, Brian recently did complete a rough inspection with, um, Master Systems Electric, so it's just finishing up mechanicals, buttoning it up, and then getting ready to, um, you know, complete the project. I anticipate, just to be very upfront with everyone here, six months to eight months, I would, in an ideal world, love to have the library mostly done, um, again.
The interior, I'm sorry.
The interior, yes, but as far as completion, moving ready, um, be able to, uh, apply for occupancy, that kind of a thing is the ideal, um, uh, trajectory for, for me personally, I think Brian might concur on that, but again, the whole issue here is just, it's a bigger project, I mean, we have, uh, he has lots of properties as well, um, and things are taking time, and it's really just a money thing, but we're not giving up, and, uh, we're capable, we're just, uh, asking for a little bit more understanding and, and patience, uh, and just, we're gonna work with Mr. Luder to keep moving forward, and that's pretty much, uh, all that I could say, so, um, we're at your mercy.
I, from the city side, um, I do get a phone call about forty-eight hours before this comes up for status, from someone in the neighborhood asking, you know, why isn't the city being more forceful with getting, you know, knocking it down, or doing something, or enforcing it, and I try to explain that we're trying to deal with the owner, try to give them an appropriate amount of time to finalize and finish what they're doing. Honestly, and just being candid with the board, it's probably not an appropriate amount of time, because we've really given a pretty long rope in this situation, um, but I appreciate the owners coming in, I appreciate the updates, I think what we'd like to do, just so that I think I can at least talk with the neighbors that call me, to, to have a status and maybe a little shorter time period, so that we can continue to get updates, so that if they are in fact moving forward with Mopper, who I know is a good insulation company, and that's moving along, at least we can say, yeah, Mopper's been in, we're still on our six to nine-month timeline, and so if we could get like a thirty-day date at this point, and then if things are moving, maybe we'll go to a sixty-day date after that, um, if there's no objection from the owners, then that's what I prefer to do.
May I add, uh, this is just my observation, and I'm being as, you know, objective as I could be, I drive by there almost daily, the yard is not unsightly, there's no, nothing here that would indicate that the property is in disarray, I mean, Brian's been cutting the lawn pretty regular, um, I think this is just, the neighbors are aware that it's just not ready for occupancy, maybe they're just, uh, concerned with that, and that it has taken a long time, but as far as demolition and, and that kind of a thing, in my humble opinion, the building is not necess, that's not necessary for that particular building, so I'd just like to continue working in this fashion, we're gonna kind of, I'm trying to light the fire, I think the fire's been lit, um, we understand you've given us a lot of time, uh, since the influx of permits that were very consistent early on, I've taken some, you know, sporadically over the last few years, um, but again, it's just, like I say, it's a money thing, we're not out of the game, and yeah, I just, uh, w- we're asking for more to, just to work with us to continue moving forward, we will be successful one way or the other, as long as I'm involved.
And don't get me wrong, I mean, this is a historic building in the city, I don't think it's something that we would like to see knocked down, but I, you know, as you know, there were several issues, several efforts at the Hanson Branch Library in Hestville, um, by independent folks before, we just said enough's enough, we turned it over to a, you know, the Chamber of Commerce over there, and they took care of making it a community center. So I'm all for the rehab of this property, because it is such an important property up in Rockersdale, so I just wanna kind of keep everybody on task, and if that's, and I get that money sometimes gets in the way of these things getting done, but if we could get a thirty-day date just to kind of check in on things, I'm good with that, and then we can, if things are moving forward well, then we can move to, you know, longer status.
Well, my thoughts are, A, when you said he, he pretty regularly cuts the grass, I guess I would, you know, recommend to you that you do everything you can to always make sure the outside is not unsightly, so that's the first thing, and I, I, I would like to have an update every thirty days to make sure there's progress being done, and at any point, if that progress stops, you gotta know that we're not gonna probably like that, I guess, for lack of a better word, so that, is that okay with you, if we do at least a couple thirty days?
Yeah, I'm good with a thirty-day date, and then we can go from there, sure, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
I recommend we set the matter for status for August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I concur, good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, have a great day.
You're welcome, you too. Uh, number ten, rental registration hearings, uh, letter A, sixty-seven thirty-four Idaho Avenue, ten thirty-five Spruce Street, two of them, and sixty-six twenty-eight Montana Avenue, good morning.
Good morning.
Could you give us your name, please?
Yes, my name is Laura Borman, I represent McCormick Real Estate.
Okay. And you're here for all, all the properties, the three properties, I, I take it?
Yes.
Okay. Could you let us know what happened exactly?
I was unaware that we had a thirty-day from the, well, thirty days to file, um, some of these homes, Idaho was purchased last year, the owner was just working on it, you know, very slowly, finally brought it to us, um, in June to rent for him.
Okay.
So what we have, uh, for sixty-seven thirty-four Idaho, uh, the owner's been listed since April fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, it's a single-family home, uh, has not been registered for two thousand and twenty-two or twenty-three, and there's currently a homestead being claimed on that property, so, uh, we just need the current owner to, uh, complete the highlighted sections on this form, and then get it back to us, so that we can send it to the county to have the homestead tax deduction removed, because only owner-occupied properties are permitted to claim those.
Okay.
So, um, and other than that, uh, there hasn't been any other issues with the property, um, the individual who is listed as the owner did purchase it in twenty-two, um, and so this would be their first time, uh, being late, but, uh, we, we wouldn't need, due to the timeframe that is elapsed, and the length of time that was left in two thousand and twenty-two, um, we wouldn't need documentation for that year as well as twenty-three, so.
He was planning on purchasing, or, uh, selling the property.
Okay.
So there were no plans last year of renting, he had just decided this year, does that make a difference?
If it was vacant, then they would just need, uh, some an affidavit, we would verify with the law records to ensure that it was, you know, no consistent usage, so, so for occupancy.
Sense.
Yes.
I mean, our biggest concern from a city perspective, of course, is that, that homestead's on there, you mean correctly, that means we can take care of it before we make the exception, and you agree with that, or?
Gotcha.
That has to be signed, they have to.
Now, uh, ten thirty-five Spruce Street, uh, we're, our records are reflecting that it's been registered for two thousand and twenty-three, so at this time, due to, uh, the change of ownership, the current owner purchased it February thirteenth to twenty-three, um, would be in compliance with the rental registration ordinance, so no action would be needed for that address. Then sixty-
Um, then sixty-six twenty-eight Montana, um, this is a single family home, owner took over ownership November twenty-eighth of twenty-two, uh, so like due to that, that thirty day period still existing that year, uh, we would have twenty-two and twenty-three outstanding, if the property was vacant at that point in time, then we would just need an affidavit to account for the November and December of twenty-two. And registering for twenty-three, there is a homestead tax exemption that is still being claimed on this property as well, uh, so we would just request that the owner complete highlighted sections, and then get that back to us, so we can have that effectively removed. Uh, we have that single family home, and we would need documentation for twenty-two, and the registration for twenty-three, depending on when the lease tenant had, began occupancy of the property.
So with that property, though, the owner that it was purchased from, they did not move out until April. We had to take them to court to file an eviction.
Okay.
So we do have that with our attorney.
Okay.
Um, so it was occupied during that time, but obviously we didn't get any rent or anything like that.
So, Nick, I have a question, then, if we're waiting for affidavits for twenty-two for, for essentially both properties, are we charging them the five dollars today?
Uh, no, we wouldn't, um, the affidavit would be an exemption, so if they're claiming that the property wasn't occupied, or, uh, there wasn't a landlord tenant agreement, um, there's different qualifications on the affidavit that would allow them to be exempt from having to register. So as long as they submit those for the timeframes in question, and then they register the property, um, they can bring in actually a current lease that's been, you know, uh, and attach it to the, uh, rental registration to be processed, and then we would, uh, be getting going.
Okay, you got that, so we'll, uh, we're not acting on twenty-two, and pending the affidavits being presented.
Yeah, yeah, as long as the homestead tax exemption forms are submitted, um, then we can process the documentation based on your decision.
Gotcha.
I recommend that for sixty-seven thirty-four Idaho, that we, um, have that homestead, I don't know, there's so much evidence there.
Yeah, we're, we need, we need an affidavit for twenty twenty-two.
For both of these.
Both, both addresses, yeah. And then they have to fill out the paperwork to, to get rid of the homestead exemption.
I recommend that we have the necessary affidavits filled out for the properties that require them, and also the removal of the homestead exemptions.
And then we're, uh, for, we'll waive the late fee for twenty twenty-three for both.
Okay, and we'll, and the late fee will be waived for twenty-two and twenty-three for both of the properties.
And I'll concur. Did you get, did you get all that?
Did that work?
There was one more affidavit, the water, you said?
Uh, you, we, um.
You'll do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I was following, but I was like, what?
Okay. We're gonna move on then to, uh, letter B, twenty-four twenty-five Birch, it looks like there's two.
Good morning.
Good morning, ma'am. Could you give us your name, please?
Yolanda Del Rio.
Could you tell us what happened? Why didn't you just register?
Um, I, my estranged husband is the one that took care of the property, so I wasn't aware that he wasn't doing the proper procedures and registering the renters.
Okay.
So, um, this property's been listed under Ms. Del Rio's name since twenty fourteen, uh, it has never been registered. Um, there have been some action on the property, um, in regards to the condition of two additional structures that have been demolished. As far as the rental registration for this property, um, earlier this year, February, I had submitted, uh, this address to Smith Cersec's office for collections for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. Um, so it would be my recommendation to the board that, you know, we allow Smith Cersec's office to continue through that process, and Ms. Del Rio reach out to them, uh, to reach a settlement agreement.
Okay.
Okay, I recommend that we, uh, rec, send this to Smith Cersec for further follow-up collection.
And I will concur. Um, letter C, forty-two ten Holman Avenue.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Jose. So what happened is, I didn't know that I have a month to register it, and I thought I, I should have, uh, like a renter, and given the renter's name and all the information, so it's why I came late.
So our records do indicate that this property is registered for twenty twenty-three, so at this point in time, um, you know, Mr. Fidel taking over ownership, May sixteenth of twenty-three, uh, would not, uh, there'd be no action at this time. So just make sure. Next year, you register before April fifteenth, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So no action necessary, thank, Nick.